Okay, I'm gonna call the village board meeting for November 18, 2019 to order. Roll call please.
Christopher Burr.
Here.
Kristin Gargi.
Here.
Chris Selner.
Here.
Bill Williams.
Here.
Aaron Moran.
Here.
Gary Hertzberg. First thing we have is confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, and online availability.
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in Wannakee during November 14th. The final agenda was posted on November 14th at all three village posting locations, and the final agenda and meeting packet were made available online on November 14th.
Thank you. Next, we have consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled, or I'd look for a motion?
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Phil Williams?
Second.
Second by Joe Zitzelberger. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed. Ayes have it. Next is public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board on an issue that's not on the agenda for this evening?
Can I just ask a question? We will be allowed to speak on items that are on the agenda when they hit that point.
Okay, it's...
Linda Edmond, 14 South Street.
Maybe. I'll say maybe right now. We'll see how we're going with it, okay? All right. And first, any other public comments?
I have one.
Caitlin.
At the seats of the three incumbent trustees who are up for reelection is the nomination papers information regarding the 2020 elections. This is a resource for you. It is also available on the village's website and at the front desk for the general public. Our first district's nomination papers is December 1st.
Thank you. Okay, first item we have under public hearing is public hearing and discuss take action on 2020 budgets.
Do you want me to do the presentation and then...
Yeah, then we'll do the public hearing after that.
For the board members, I put a little TIF sort of cheat sheet on your places if it comes up during the discussion and you want to remember which TIF district is which. There's a little more description for you there. So, this presentation will be shorter than the one that we had initially at the October 21st meeting. It's a little bit more to give an update on what may have changed from that presentation and, you know, clearly to answer any questions that you guys might have still remaining on the budget as it is proposed. So, the initial presentation was on October 21st. We had that voluntary public hearing on November 4th to take feedback, and then tonight is the official required public hearing, and then after that, the board will consider the final budget approval. So, there still are some unknowns to note. A few pieces of the puzzle have been filled in. We did receive the MATC levy and the school district levy. MATC, their total levy went up 6.85 percent. In the school district, total levy went up 9.99 percent. The county approved their budget last week, but we have not yet received what our share of their budget is. I would expect that I'll get that this week. They're still saying, well, it's already mid-November. They say it could be up till late November, but I'm hopeful that we will find out what our piece of the county budget is this week. We still have some of our credits. We don't know yet, but we should be finding those out this week. The school property tax credit, the lottery credit, and the first dollar credit typically come around the 20th of November. So, those are kind of what remains before we can determine the mill rate and also start the process to create and print the tax bills. So, in terms of things that have changed since that initial budget that you saw in the initial presentation, we did finally, last week, receive our manufacturing assessment. Just a reminder that manufacturing is assessed by the state, and we're kind of at their mercy to find out what that final is. Luckily, my estimates that I used back in October were pretty close. It was an increase of .3 percent over my estimates, which is $6 million, but out of, you know, multi-billion dollar total assessed value. It's fairly close, I guess. And then I just included some of the history, you know, again, showing the volatility that manufacturing has had over the past number of years. Hopefully, we're, you know, more stable. You know, they've corrected some of the things that they've wanted to correct, and then hopefully we won't see those negative years like we did a few years ago. We all, into the budget, we also added a $50,000 estimate for the aquatic center feasibility and planning that was approved by the board, you know, to solicit the proposals for that. We're planning to fund that since it's really a one-time cost out of fund balance, so it's not affecting the tax levy. One other change is we had to add about $32,000 to the budget, so we were in the open enrollment phase, which ended at the end of October, and a couple people added family coverage that didn't have it before, and a few people made changes going from single to family for dental. So, now we know what everybody has selected. We could get the actual figures in there. We made some assumptions, you know, if we knew people were getting married or having children, that type of thing, we had already factored some of those in, but we just really have no way of knowing who might change during the open enrollment period, so we had to add that in there.
Can we take this one?
Yeah.
So, this was a proposal that the board discussed or was introduced and discussed with the board at your last meeting. Really, two items we discussed. One was the initiation of Sunday hours at the library beginning next school year, so September of 2020. We also discussed bolstering the public works labor position by adding a position at some point during the year, mid-year, as well as allowing that position, that new labor position, to assist with municipal building facility management. So, we kind of have a tweak, a little bit of a tweaked proposal for you. The library Sunday hours proposal remains the same, included in your packet. Was that in the packet?
Yes.
There is a memo from the library director outlining some of the background to this proposal, but these numbers appear jive with that proposal that was in your packet. Sitting down with staff over the course of the past couple weeks, talking about the labor proposal was something that frankly generated more questions than answers, but certainly one question or one issue that remained was the continued pressure placed on public works for the increasing service demand upon the department. So, we're suggesting that over the course of, over the next half-year, we evaluate that need with deeper research to be certain of the function of the position, the way in which departments share in some of the facility expenses, and that we're, we just want to do it right. So, what we're suggesting is that we actually do something similar to what we did last year, leaving a number in the budget called payroll contingency that could be adjusted mid-year for a specific purpose. Now, I'm expecting that that purpose would be one related to a labor addition at some point, but we'd like to fully vet that and evaluate it. So, we'd like to study the organization, and then with the additional funding, adopt a position at some point over the course of 2020. Now, our evaluation of this, or this proposal, does the same identical thing as it was in the initial proposal in terms of impact on the budget. It ends up being budget neutral to your initial proposal because it's offset by the $70,000 full funding of the retired health insurance obligation through general fund, therefore eliminating that from future use of levy for that purpose in years going forward. But the 2020 budget impact out of the gate would be relief on the levy by $75,000, allowing capacity to do those other two things. So, that's where we, as staff, sit on recommending addressing these two issues.
A few more. This slide is actually identical to the one that was in October. These are, again, some of the more significant sort of fixed items that we had going into the budget from the get-go in terms of how the mid-year hires are affecting 2020, the EMS and the fire increases that we discussed before. Again, some of those library operational things, and then just the 5.63 percent increase to the health insurance. There's some dental increases built in there as well. In terms of personnel expenses, not much different on this slide, other than in the, because this was kind of getting at the cola of the staff and what that meant to the budget. But down in the benefits section, primarily the health and dental is showing a larger increase than we did before, again, because of those changes during the open enrollment period. And then there's a little bit added to the Wisconsin retirement, again, making some of those changes for the library staff hour additions for having the Sunday hours. On the debt service side, this is all pretty, pretty much the same as the last time. We're still compliant with all of our debt policies with this 2020 budget that we're presenting. We're, you know, gonna be at about 35 percent of our limit at the end of 2019, our percentage of overall budget. That did drop a little bit from our initial presentation because we did add some non-debt-related expenditures to the overall budget, so that brought the debt share down a little bit. But the equalized tax rate remains the same as what you saw back in October, you know, well below our limit. So, what do these changes all mean to the tax rate? Well, surprisingly, it's nearly a wash. It's at the, in the October presentation, the tax rate, the assessed tax rate was 5.932, and we've gone down now to 5.931. So, even though we had to add some costs such as for the health insurance, open enrollment changes, because of that addition of the assessed value for manufacturing being a little bit higher than what I had predicted, we were able to stay pretty, pretty much exactly the same as where we were. So, that's good news in my book. This slide is exactly the same as what you saw before, so this is kind of the results where I expect 2019 to end up. So, we're still predicting that we'll be, you know, almost $400,000 better than where we thought we would be based on how we budgeted a $620,000 decrease, and we kind of went over some of these things before. But a lot on the revenue side, it's mainly, you know, some pretty conservative budgeting on the revenue side and some, you know, unexpected or higher-than-expected state aids and our credit card rebate. So, if you were to compare this to what we saw in October, the general fund expenditures are higher now. Again, we added the library Sunday hours and the staffing related to that, the expense for the aquatic study and planning for that potential project, and then the health and dental changes for open enrollment, which those, the majority of those employees were in the general fund, so that brought those costs up. Just a slight change, though, to the general fund levy. So, back in October, we were at an increase of 9.29 percent. Now, we're up to 9.87 percent increase, and again, those are because we did have to increase the levy for those open enrollees that chose the health insurance. But we're still well under, you know, we still have that cushion for the levy limits, so we're not, don't have any troubles there, even though we had to raise the levy a little This slide where we had attempted to show what the impact would be on actual tax bills for the village share of the taxes, this doesn't change at all because that one one-thousandth of a point in the tax rate, once it's rounded, it didn't change these tax figures at all. So, we're still showing that the average home in Wannakee, which is now 367,734, would show an increase of $84 on their tax bill for the village share. Here, we condensed onto one very full slide, sort of a key highlight for each of the departments. So, senior center, they're seeing an increase in their county funding for their case management and nutrition, which helps them do their programs there. Public Works and Parks, the snow and ice budget was increased because of all the snow events, and we've seen, you know, already we've had several snow events that have come about that, you know, sort of validates the need for this. The police, they're gonna get that bidirectional amplifier system so that they can better communicate within their own building. The one thing I missed when I updated this for library, so obviously, we're gonna have the full year of the new library and some additional programming, but then also the Sunday hours are included in the draft budget. In finance, we're gonna continue with some financial management planning that we've been starting. Economic development, there's gonna be some banner and signage improvements. Engineering, the focus is on streets and street rehab, community services, expanding their programming, and then facilitating the planning for that potential aquatics facility. The clerk will be seeing four expected elections in 2020, and administration wants to continue their commitment to the organizational culture and staff development. The board will continue to work on strategic planning efforts, and the court, the judge's salary would be increased, as we discussed before, on May 1st, 2020 with the, with the new term of the judge. Just, again, just want to thank everybody that helped with the budget. Because, you know, generally, it went smoothly this year. I thought everybody did a good job, departments getting me their stuff and everybody following through, so thanks for all that.
Renee did a decent job, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll keep those comments to commend you on your efforts until after our public hearing. How's that sound?
There we go, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna open. Is there anything else? Just want to make sure.
Nope. Then, just following the public hearing, we would hope for this action.
Okay, so I'm gonna open up the public hearing for anybody who would like to address this on this. Do we have any forms?
No.
Is there anybody who would like to address this on the budget?
I have a question. Okay, on the budget, can we ask a question or not?
Yeah.
Okay. I saw that the average home taxes were, on the $200,000 house, was $1,000 something, and write down these.
If I can go back to that slide quick, too.
We have been paying way over that for the last 20 years or better.
Well, this is just the village part, so it's not the school part. It's not the county. It's not the tech college. This is just our village part. Which, I don't have that pie chart, but the village is, the school is the majority of the tax bill.
Yeah.
So, that's, this is just the village part.
One thing I missed, I have to have your name and address.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Barb Drazen, 203 Seventh Street.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. Board members' comments, questions?
So, the library, the weekend hours, are they, are we redeploying people from our scheduled hours to, I mean, or how is that, we're, is it only gonna be the...
To an extent, we do need additional staff in order to continue to fill those hours. So, there would be three new people and then additional hours for the current staff as well. So, you'd have a Sunday core set of staff would work every Sunday, and they would also fill up shifts that would be as necessary.
So, do we have an estimate on how much that would be for a full year? The Sunday cost for a full year?
So, we thought it would be, so we have in here the $27,000, but since it, so that's starting in September, so we thought it would be about double that because it would just go through the end of May? Is that right?
Correct. So, we would be open essentially the Sundays, Labor Day weekend, week after Labor Day, to the week before Memorial Day, and then closed during the summer.
So, we'd have about four months' worth in 2020, and then the next year, we'd have about eight or nine months that it would be, have Sunday hours.
So, I'll ask a question if you don't mind, Eric.
Sure.
So, those Sunday hours, when you plan for that, are you gonna have specialized planning for events that are gonna happen on Sundays or just gonna be open?
I think to begin with, they'll just be open, but ideally, we'll be having as many events as we can possibly do every day that we're open. The goal in the next couple of years is that there's something happening at the library every day that we're open.
I was just assuming for people that can't make it during the week because they're working, that if we have a Sunday opportunity for them to have the programming, that would be great, too, so...
We're pushing for storytime on Saturdays and programs for adults on Saturdays, so I would see no reason why we wouldn't do the same for our Sundays.
Awesome. Okay. Gary?
I know, I made comments about, you know, this public works and parks and trying to increase staffing, but I like the approach that staff has taken on really looking at the whole organization and some of the needs that are gonna change in the next, you know, six months. So, you know, I support their idea about looking at the whole organization, yet still having a contingency there that can address that need, but do it the right way, so...
Okay. Joe?
Echo what Gary said, it's definitely a good approach. No need to spend the money if we don't need to, and if there's a good reason to, you know, by all means. Other than that, I think the library being open on Sundays is good, and knowing about the radios and things in use by the police department, the bidirectional amplifier is definitely a good addition.
Perfect. Aaron, any comments?
Just echoing the library hours again, I think that, thank you to everyone that figured out how to make that happen. Look forward to it.
Bill?
All the departments weighed in, they kept their budgets tight. I think it's a good budget, and I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, let's hold for a second. Any other comments, Bill? The one that I'll say is, and we're gonna be talking about it a little bit later, is that we did, we are increasing our budget for roads, something that was important, I think, to all of us at the board here, to address our roads, and we're taking that big step this year, starting, coming up here. So, we'll be talking about that shortly, but I think that's important to understand within this budget as well, so... Okay. Renee, thank you for all the work on this before Phil makes his motion, you know, that I know this is a lot of time, and it's important for all of our community to understand, it takes a lot to go into this budget and understanding this budget and making sure that we're doing all that we can for our taxpayers, residents, constituents, whatever we want to use, to make sure they're getting the best value for that money. So, I appreciate everything that you do with this. Same thing to all of our staff who put in, puts in their time to make sure that you're, they're getting the information to you. So, thank you.
I move to approve the resolution approving the 2020 Village of Wannakee budget.
Motion by Phil Williams.
Second.
Second by Bill Random. Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed? Ayes have it. Next, we have a second public hearing and discussion take action on a request by Donna Dorn for approval of a certified survey map splitting off a 3.3 acre parcel and rezoning it from County A1-EX to Village A1 at 6303 Mefford Road, Town of Westport.
As introduction, Chris, this is a land division and rezoned, and really for some estate planning for a property of a farm, property on Mefford Road. They're splitting off the three acres of that and keeping the farmhouses intact, and what the owners indicate is that they're splitting it off so the daughter can keep the farmhouses within the, within the family. The joint planning commission weighed in and made a recommendation of approval, as well as the town board. Our comments at the, at the village level are very minimal. It has very little more impact on the village.
Okay, then I'm gonna open up the public, public hearing for this, for anybody who would like to address this. Do we have any forms? Or anybody who would like to address the board? Super exciting topic. One once, twice. Okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing.
And make a motion to approve the certified survey map and rezoning of the property of Village A1, as recommended by the Town of Westport Planning Commission.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg, second. By Bill Random. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
P posed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, under license and permits, discuss and take action on operator license application for Brianna Bachover and Missella Harmon. Caitlin?
That's our government's approval. The operator license included in your packet, subject to conclusion to an approved responsible beverage server training course and review by the Wannakee Department.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Joe Zitzelberger.
Second.
Second by Aaron Moran. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed? Ayes have it. Under new business, discuss and take action on strand task order for 2020 public works improvements.
Kevin's here to answer some questions. I just wanted to spend a little time on the road projects that were taken on for 2020. Initially, we had a million dollars' worth of roadway, and we've increased that and doubled it to $2 million, and that really allows us to do 2.6 miles of roadway, and that is 4 percent of our 72 miles, so 4 percent of our roadways. So, in terms of really having a sustainable plan going forward, I think this really goes a long ways in terms of meeting it. So, if it's 4 percent, I mean, you're looking at a, you know, a 25-year turnover if we kept a very similar budget, but I think in terms of budget, we've really taken on the roads that are in the worst shape. These are roadways where we're leaving the curb and gutter intact, and we're really just going after the base and replacing the asphalt, because many of these roads, we can extend them another 15, 20-plus years by just, you know, by rehabbing this rather than waiting for them to a point where they need to reconstruct. Many of our projects over the last, you know, 20-some years have been reconstructs, and we really didn't have a lot of choices because of the amount of base material that was in those roadways and utilities that were aging and needed to be replaced. So, now, we're at a point where we're coming up on roads that, you know, are probably, you know, I'm looking at the Verlaine Street, and I know that one's in the neighborhood of probably 30 years old, somewhere in, somewhere in that, that range, and I think some of these other roadways are probably comparable. So, that even as, and this is before, we, and since that point, we've really increased our standard for roads. So, I think going forward, we'll even have more life of these roads going forward than we, than we do now. So, I do think this is a really sustainable amount of budget to keep us on task without falling behind going forward with road projects. So, we've identified... So we've identified all the roads, I think the one that the, the Public Works Committee added, and, and they recommended, uh, moving forward with the, with the task order, with, with the add, with the addition of Verlaine Street. So with that, uh, I would, I would open it up to any questions that the board may have.
Board members' questions for Kevin? Do we have anything, uh, can you give us an update, maybe it's, is it, Brian, keep me in check if I'm going out of line here. With our woodland drive, um, that we're doing some repairs with right now, is there any funding that should be in this budget potentially?
Yeah, I, I, I left some contingencies, so if we do need to, to do some more work on woodland drive on the speed humps, that we can do as part of the twenty twenty project. And you're right, this is, you know, that's really is part of the scope of our twenty twenty projects, and I think I shared with the board last time when we did replace a couple of the, we tried four of them, you know, this fall, that we found recycled concrete in, in the base material. And it's a very, very strong indication, it's my opinion, that recycled concrete is causing the problems of, of the bumps. Uh, I think other communities are seeing it across Wisconsin that use a DOT spec, and just as a reminder, it wasn't our specifications. We would never allow that type of material, but we received, you know, in excess of two million dollars in grant funding for that roadway. But when you accept those grant funds, you're required to use the DOT spec, in which we did, in fact, the, the DOT did the construction management of that project. And I don't think anybody foresee this happening, but I think they're finding that as moisture gets into these, these base materials that use the re- the recycled concrete, when they get that moisture into the cement after it's been crushed, and it's been separated out from that, you know, that concrete that's been formed, that we're getting, we're getting some, some, some heaving going on, and it's, it's understandable what's going on. Uh, the solutions are, are, are not inexpensive. Uh, we're gonna hope to see how we did a, a specialized, uh, milling, where we milled off, uh, the whole pathway, or the whole, the whole saw cut of the area, or the whole, the whole trench, and then, uh, on the lips, we, uh, we, we, we then peeled back on the side of the trenches, leaving about, uh, there's about four inches of asphalt, leaving about two inches of asphalt, and then, uh, then s- then really trimming down another two inches to try and create a seal from water getting into that subbase. Uh, is it gonna work, it, it's hard to say. Um, it's going to take us to be very vigilant in terms of seal coating that roadway, uh, going forward, uh, much more than, than a typical road, I mean, a typical road is, you know, uh, five-plus years before we're, we're thinking about crack filling and seal coating. This one's gonna have to be much more aggressive, because the alternative to that is going to be removing all the asphalt, removing all the base, replacing all the base and replacing the asphalt. And there, we're, you know, we're talking, you know, in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, you know, for, at least, even for our share of, of that project, so it's not gonna be. But remember, we did get two million dollars' worth of, of funding to build that roadway, so it's, you know, I know it's a tough pill to swallow in terms of, of being stuck with some recycled concrete in there, but really the lion shed, uh, lion's, you know, work of this was, was already done as part of the grant funding.
Thank you. As far as, um, just for overall knowledge of our board members who maybe aren't on the Public Works Committee, um, I'm assuming you have a plan based on your qualities of how you're going about which roads we're doing first?
We do, and in fact, I, I think we've, you know, it, it's, it gets somewhat meaningless after five-plus years, I think we're always, we're reevaluating every year, but we do have a plan that actually extends out over fifteen years, but knowing that it's not gonna like happen in that exact order, but though every year, we, we do have at least these set of plans that we're gonna go forward, and I think as, you know, maybe next year is probably pretty realistic, that's the ones we're gonna try and tackle, same as year two and three. But I think you get farther out than that, it gets a little bit iffy on, on which projects you're gonna do, but to answer your question, yeah, I think we've identified at least fifteen years worth of projects, and of course, there's, there's more after that, but I think that was a pretty good, uh, start in terms of identifying, at least prioritizing, so if we get a question from the public, hey, am I on the list? Well, yes, you're on the list, but you might not be for, you know, a number of years.
Interesting wording, on the list at this time of the year, next.
So, the, uh, our speed bumps, which I don't mind that much, um, and I've been in Wisconsin too long, and except for putting that thing in Tupperware, it will not stay dry. How are we gonna, is that, what's the reality of how much we've spent, how much we'll end up spending?
Yeah, so we did, uh, four of them this year, and I think there's in total, there's, uh, it depends if we can group a couple together, but there's about twelve to fourteen in total, so we tried two on the north side and two on the south side, and we'll see how those hold up. But that was, yeah, that was about twenty-eight thousand total, so the village share was about fourteen thousand. It's a shared road at the town, so they paid fourteen thousand, so i- if this works, I mean, I think we can see how, how the, you know, the humps-
And you said, how much was it to replace the whole thing? How much is to replace the whole thing?
A couple hundred thousand, I think, our share is probably a hundred.
It's a long bunch of road.
I know, but I'm just thinking, how much did we already spend on it?
Yeah, so twenty-eight, I mean, so-
I mean, last year, didn't we do something like that?
Uh, last year was really minimal, I mean, that was less than five thousand dollars, that was a, that, that didn't work, I can tell you, that process won't work.
And we really won't know till spring, when we get some heaving and, uh-
We will know in February. I mean, it's what it is, it's road.
Yeah, 'cause you'll get that, you'll start to get that moisture and, and, you know, to get into the roadway and-
Okay, any other comments or questions for Kevin, and otherwise a motion?
Kevin?
Joe?
Um, I'm wondering if you can give sort of a quick overview of the first page of the task order, um, specifically the curb ramp replacement, valley gutter, um, just a little, what those are.
Yeah, Kent, you know, you don't get to talk to the board much, do you, do you wanna answer that question?
So on the first page, there, there's a section called Million Overlay, and basically that's generally treating the pavement within the curb and gutter, so as Kevin said, there's a procedure that would take place where they mill off the asphalt, leaving some of it, and then come back and pulverize the remaining asphalt and use that to shape the roadway, um, prior to final paving. So then we'll add four new inches of asphalt on all the streets.
And that's a fairly quick process, as a grand scheme of thing.
Relative to reconstructing, it is quicker.
Okay.
Um, the section on curb and gutter, curb ramp replacement is because of ADA requirements, a lot of these older section of towns do not have curb ramps that meet ADA requirements, they're either too steep, they don't have the proper width, they don't have the, um, truncated dome plates on, and so we've identified which streets are going to need some type of curb ramp adjustments. Uh, with Centennial Parkway leading the way there, there's a lot of illegal, I'll say, ramps there, so, um, part of this would be to survey those, um, and then do a, a proper design, so that we set correct slopes and widths and, and that kind of thing. Uh, the valley gutter installation is for drainage, a lot of streets have, um, curb and gutter, say where the water's flowing, and then it'll cross an intersection because there is no storm sewer collection point there. And with that water crossing an intersection across asphalt pavement, it tends to deteriorate the pavement work quickly, uh, the street falls apart quickly. So what we've been implementing, because there is no storm sewer to connect to, is these things called valley gutters. They're about six feet wide, they have a very soft, um, flow line in them, so the cars can travel over them without a super abrupt bump there. Uh, but they're basically just to handle more the snowmelt or the smaller type flows that, that continually run, you know, if you get a freeze thaw, it'll continually run across there, and that's when the damage is done, so these-
Is that done with concrete then?
Yes, it's done with the concrete, it's, it's, uh, easier to control with concrete, concrete usually stands up better than rain asphalt.
Just to highlight a couple of things that, and Kent did a nice job of explaining it, uh, kudos to Brian Wallace, who's on our Public Works Committee, and he was really instrumental in, in trying to help us put together our method in terms of how we resurface these roadways, in that we now survey them ahead of time, figure out how much material we have there, and set, and then we set our crown, so that we know going in, or the contractor knows going in, of how much of that asphalt that he mills off is gonna have to be taken off-site. So it, rather than trying to, it, it, it worked really well this last year in terms of, of not having excess material on site and trying to, to lose it, and we got a, a nice crown. Um, the ADA, it's, one, it's the right thing to do in terms of making all these ADA compliant, but it does add substantial cost to, to our road projects, and it's a requirement, it's not something that's optional for us. Uh, the, the, the recent, I guess, the, um, notices that's been provided by the, you know, the feds and, and other DOT is that when you, when you actually take on road projects and resurfacing, you're required to bring up all those, uh, eight, those, all those ramps up to ADA. And like Kent said, those concrete swales, asphalt, uh, doesn't work well for moving water, if you have water sitting on, on, on asphalt, it tends to break up, so it does hold up better to have wa- you know, using these concrete flumes for, for drainage.
There is just one other section, storm sewer installation, instead of a valley gutter at Kearney Way and South Street, we have the opportunity to connect to a storm sewer, so we're gonna do that, it's preferred over a, a valley gutter, just because you can get the water underground into a pipe, so.
And is that, that's, uh, some part of Kearney that's already being done?
That would be part of the Kearney Way Milling and Overway, Way Project, yes.
And then the last question that I've got is with the sidewalk replacement, it specifies owner identified, what is the criteria for that?
Yeah, we have established a policy that ha- includes criteria for, uh, the replacement, and I don't remember off the top of my head what they all are, but typically it's more than a, a quarter inch, uh, trip hazard, uh, more than spalling of the, the sidewalk, more than fifty percent, or cracks that are, are greater than, I can't remember the, the gap of the, of, but there's a certain set gap, so if it's over that, it has to be replaced. But in reality, you have to have that, if, if we have, uh, trips, and we do, and, you know, on occasions, we have trips within, within the village, and our insurance, you know, covers those, and as long as you have, uh, a replacement program in place, and the minimum that, you know, the insurance companies and others have set is that you need to replace, uh, at least look at twenty to twenty-five percent, twenty percent basically of, of your village, and, and tackle that in terms of, like, so that you're, at least in a five-year cycle, you're, you're visiting the entire village, we're much more aggressive than that, so we've been exceeding that.
Okay. Thanks. Phil did you?
Um, if everyone's finished, I would say that the Public Works Committee looked at this, uh, we think it makes sense. Uh, we would hear from some people say, uh, why not my street, but within the next couple of years, everything that makes sense will be done, and it'll make a lot of sense, so I'm ready to say that the Public Works Committee would like to approve the strand, strand task order to provide engineering for a twenty twenty Public Works Improvement.
Okay, motion by Phil Williams?
I'll second. Three of us though.
Um, I'm gonna go with ladies first, and say Erin was the second, Erin Moran the second, and any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, next we have, um, discuss and take action on village board meeting time. So this was brought up, um, at a listening session that I gave, um, a month ago, approximately, and, uh, the request was if we could modify our meeting time for village board meetings back an hour? And I believe it was Mrs. Ashmore that said it, and is this the one you wanted to comment on? Okay, just wanted to make sure, if this was it, I was gonna say, here you go, um, that's your time. So that was the question, um, posed to me, so I said I would bring it before us, and I'm bringing it before us, at, at this point. So, I'd look for comments or questions, or any of those.
When you say back, do you mean five or seven o'clock?
Seven, so move our me- board meeting time to seven, um, for this, as opposed to six.
Well, I, uh, I kinda approve of the six o'clock time, I think it's, it helps us with our staff and et cetera, because we gotta, have to keep these people around that have worked all day, if we have to keep them around another hour, it's a little bit of a burden on them, and probably extra expense for the village.
I'll second that. I'm going with the six o'clock still, I prefer the six.
Okay, Joe? I mean, I'll just go around, I guess, and see what people's feelings are.
Personally, if I were looking to change it, I'd be more likely to go earlier, um, for that same sort of reason. You know, if we've got, if we've gotta keep staff around, let's make it as efficient as we can for them.
Gary?
Yeah, I mean, we have some meetings that are five-thirties that, and we do it because of staff, and, you know, those are a little tough, but I, I don't wanna move beyond six, just because these folks will be here all day then, you know, so I'd rather keep it at six myself.
Aaron?
I say keep it six, and we've had a handful of almost four-hour meetings, you know, 'cause we barely made it to Culvers afterwards, but, uh, I just-
Now we know how you imagine it.
That's my scale of how long I have. No, I just, I mean, I think that, if anything, maybe earlier, I understand people work, but I think six is okay time right now.
Okay. Todd?
I appreciate the, the notion of, of concern for your staff, but, um, staff hasn't complained about the meeting times. Um, we certainly would be accommodating of the village board's, uh, time desires, so, um, whatever you, whatever you care to do is good with us.
Okay, well, I feel like I, even if I wanted to change right now, I think I'm outvoted, but, um, I would say that our intent always is to make sure the public has opportunities to participate, whether it be through the public hearing process, that they can put something in, um, in writing to us, uh, if they can't make it here for six o'clock, we have all our meetings on YouTube now that they can watch them. Uh, we've, we've tried to make this as accessible as we can to people, and I think to all of your points, the seven o'clock, moving it back an hour, a lot of our work is done at our committee level, um, where we're getting that information, and those typically start at five-thirty. Um, those, if you can make it to them for anybody in the public that's here or watching, um, those are great opportunities for you to hear, um, the work that's being done by, by our citizens and our board members, um, if you can make it to those, so, I would, I would, uh, do we need to make a motion, or do we just let it stay as is?
I think, I don't think you need to take any action. I would just add to you that I, I can tell you that a lot of other communities are the same as you, where the lot, a lot of the work that they do is at committee levels, and I know of some communities that started at four forty-five or five, um, so I think some of your meetings start at five-thirty, and that's even later than some other communities when they start their committee meetings.
Todd?
The, the other item that was brought up at the listening session, which I, we shouldn't address today, is it's not, um, identified in the agenda, but that was the, um, Plan Commission agenda, and it's, or, meeting time in its conflict with school board meetings. I mean, all that, I know that's a tricky arrangement, because we also have joint plan that we time with, with all these proposals that are zooming around. Um, so that may be something that, uh, the Plan Commission may wish to address.
On the board, it's not on the agenda, so I don't think we should talk about that.
Okay, thanks for gaveling me, Chris, that was nice.
So, I don't use the gavel, so that was the one I needed to, um, make sure that, so our, our Plan Commission can take that up at appropriate time, if we want to. So, okay, let's move on to the next item. Discuss and take action on resolution to establish a Create Wanakee Committee. Todd, is this you?
Yeah, it might have been a, might have been at the last meeting when I sort of showed off the, the new brand for Create Wanakee, which is an outcome from, um, years of work related to the Creative Economy Initiative, followed up by the Bowles Study that was done a year or so ago, that laid out a number of rec- recommendations, one of which was to establish this brand identity and give it purpose and function. Um, another one of the recommendations was to sort of formalize organization that can take this work forward, um, rather than leaving it as a solely staff function or kind of a, a disjointed, uh, array of activities. Uh, so the recommendation is to create a committee called the Create Wanakee Committee, there's creativity for you. Um, and, uh, a resolution is in your packet that identifies their function, their purpose, and their design. The makeup would be, uh, as is proposed, a nine-member committee, the reason it's not your typical seven is I would imagine this group not as involved necessarily in policymaking or policy review, but more, uh, action, the, the doing of, um, a lot of our events and our functions and our activities. So that's why more hands-on deck is, is the recommendation. Um, but if, if the board is interested in the establishing of that committee, the resolution is prepared for your approval.
Board members' comments, questions for Todd?
I would make a motion, uh, to approve the resolution to establish a Create Wanakee Committee.
Okay, so we have a motion by Gary Hertzberg, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe Zitzelberger. I don't think there was any notes in here about when this meeting or when this group would meet. Is this gonna be a monthly meeting? Is this going to be an as-is type situ, or as needed?
Yeah, I would, I would expect a monthly meeting. Um, I haven't jumped to that conclusion yet. Uh, I think being that it's a newly formed committee, we can look at the, the interested individuals who'd like to be a part of it. And to some extent, um, accommodate, uh, based on, based on who we see fit for the committee. So I don't know yet on the exact time and dates.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it. And our last new business, discuss and take action on utilization of community development authority and proposed elimination of Wannakee Economic Development Commission. Todd?
Well, I'm assuming that since we haven't heard from, uh, from anyone in the audience yet, this may be the item. Did you want to entertain any public comments before?
Is this the item?
So I have just two things that I'd like you to consider when you report on this, because I used to be running forward on this. I did a little bit of research and CDA seems like they're pretty common in Wisconsin. The two concerns I have are that, um, the main reason that this is being created seems to be to deal with the affordable housing study and how to get affordable housing. So I'd like to see somebody who would actually qualify for affordable housing be included in the CDA. And then the other thing, and maybe it's, you know, being a little bit too cautious, but I think it needs to be considered is that, um, the Foxconn had, the whole Foxconn thing where land was taken by eminent domain was through a CDA. And so living in the older part of town, I kind of would like to make sure that we're not taking out current affordable housing to make new affordable housing. So those are my two concerns.
Thank you. And since I let you, does anybody else wanna make any comments? I don't wanna, go ahead.
Mary Heinebecker, three oh six West Third Street. Um, I would like to see that as what was recommended by the Housing Task Force, that some of the Housing Task Force members and the Plan Commission members beyond this board, that was one of the big recommendations that came out of the Housing Task Force. I don't want to just see this just become something that has ignored the members that were on the Housing Task Force that went up through all the work for nine months, be ignored. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree completely that we don't want to ignore anything that all those people did. I was one of them, so I, I don't want to just have our work ignored at that timeframe. Agreed, so. Anyone else? Okay. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'm sure. And this proposal is, is really to, it's honoring the work of the task force in that what I'm hoping is that we're going to get earnestly into the business of forming policy recommendations that the board can then look to implement. Um, in some cases, it might be the Plan Commission to the board via the CDA. Um, but, uh, in looking at the organization, our organization capacity, our ability to get work done, my reason for suggesting this approach is to get at it. And I think that's the, that's, I think, the greatest sort of, um, uh, testament to the work of the task force, which I think was very impressive and will be task number one for, uh, the CDA. I did, um, included in the, in your packet was a lot of the info and the reasoning that you saw at your last meeting. Um, or, that was a month or two ago. But the board, I think at that time, absorbed the information, wanted to digest it a little bit. Um, and we revised some information and provided you with that, that additional time and that additional, uh, uh, content here. Um, included in the packet is the current ordinance for the CDA, the current, or resolution for the CDA and the current ordinance for the WEDC. So those you saw before as well. What I do want to touch base on and maybe working to address one of, um, Linda Ashmore's questions was the duties of the CDA and, and what it is they can or can't do. I think her question about the CDA, I don't know whether the, the, was the case in Pleasant Prairie where the CDA unilaterally, um, took action to condemn property. Um, but in our case, the C, the CDA language in the current resolution, which frankly can, can stand going forward, but we're gonna evaluate whether changes should be made. But it puts all approval, um, upon the village board. Frankly, the CDA can't do anything that the village board doesn't empower it to do by the design of our current resolution. And you can, Brian, I, I know you actually helped craft that back in 2011, but that was a, uh, priority of the board when it was created then. Assuming that's the priority still, that you don't create a rogue institution, then I think we're heading in the right direction. Um, and I wouldn't advise doing that either. Um, but specifically, the, what the current Plan Commission does for the village, uh, the CDA is not intended to replace that function, although the statutes allow a CDA to operate, uh, and perform functions similar to that of a Plan Commission besides being able to approve a comprehensive plan. I think that's the one statutory thing they can't do. But we don't see the village board giving that additional, giving additional Plan Commission-type duties to the CDA for their work. The CDA can't make changes to village laws. Um, they won't be able to unilaterally approve a development proposal or a project. Um, and we're also suggesting that they not act as a Historic Preservation Commission. We did discuss that at our last meeting. Um, it's a good suggestion and I, I wholeheartedly support, um, the village's work to, um, to pay attention to our roots. Um, and I, uh, I like, I like that potential initiative going forward. Today, the Historic Preservation Commission duty rests with the Plan Commission. Um, we're not making any recommendation of that today. But if you, if you do care at some point to put greater priority on that particular issue in discussing this with, with, uh, the village attorney, the one notion would be to, to create a separate standing Historic Preservation Commission to take on that singular, uh, role. And not just singular, there's other things that relate to it. But that would be what we'd recommend as opposed to combining that with the CDA. So we're suggesting that that may be a debate for another day, um, but that isn't a duty we're suggesting the CDA undertake. The membership of a CDA, again addressing one of Lynn, uh, um, one of the questions raised, is identified by state law. Um, it's a, a seven resident, uh, comprises of seven residents, appointed through the typical process of village board, village president appointment and confirmation by the board. There actually is language in the, in the state statutes that says that members should have sufficient ability and expertise in the field of urban renewal, community development and housing. I think, um, I think that, that can be interpreted in a broad way for our purposes. Um, so to the extent that we can find members who fit that bill as well as, um, things like, uh, representing the task force are certainly within, within reason. Two members are to be from the village board. The non-board members would have staggered four-year terms. And then the CDA can elect, select its own chairperson. However, uh, the village president, if appointed to the CDA, becomes the CDA chair by virtue of position. That's the, the nitty gritty of the proposal. Um, we're not, we don't have it in order for you to approve and create. You actually didn't ask us to assemble that proposal. We, we didn't dive into deeper legal review, um, per your request. So if this, however, is what you'd care to do, we will have this prepared for your next meeting. Then once approved in legal form, um, we will then solicit, uh, membership. I, I think it's probably fair to look at the exist, we do have a CDA, we've had one for a long time. They just don't do anything for reasons that you saw in the memo. But we should evaluate the membership of the CDA, um, whether appropriate or not. That will, uh, align, line up the opportunity to solicit new membership that then the village board can consider for appointment. Happy to address any questions that you have about it. And Brian, you might have an opportunity to chime in too.
Joe? As a current member of what's left of the Economic Development Committee, um, is it appropriate for me to vote on getting rid of that?
I think so, because that's a village committee.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Same question, um, as a current member of the CDA. This is appropriate for me.
Yeah, because it's, it's all, it all falls within the boundaries of your, you know, duties and responsibilities as an elected official.
Gary, any comments?
I agree, if we have committees that, um, have completed what we asked them to do or, uh, we find out that there's no reason to have meetings, just to have meetings if you're not accomplishing a goal. And I think this is a great recommendation, so I support it.
Phil?
Well, this, uh, accomplishes what we wanted to after, by having the housing development meetings and that sort of thing, so. Yes, it's a step forward.
Same? Okay, so I know we're not gonna discuss it tonight, but from the, I have a couple of questions about the Historic Preservation Commission. This may be for you, Brian?
Okay.
Would that, if we, if we were to form that, would we, what would that report to? Would that report directly to the board, would that report to the Plan Commission if we took that out of the Plan Commission realm?
I, I think, well, first of all, I think you would have the discretion to, to, to have, have it certainly report to the board. Well, I should step back. I mean, in the city of Madison, the, the Historic Preservation Commission does not report to anyone. You know, you, if they. I'm sorry? They, they issue certificate of appropriateness for projects in the city of Madison and it does not have to go to common council. Now, I'm not recommending that. Um, I, I think that if, if, if you were gonna take it away from the Plan Commission, you might want to have them report to you. But I think you have discretion on that.
Which was my next question? As far as what power they would have, um, with making decisions, they would never have the ability to overrule the village board, or would they?
Well, it, we would set it up, if, assuming the village board wanted us to set up that way, we would set it up so they would not have that power, correct?
To what we did, stood with, or what we're doing with the CDA.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, um, as, as Todd noted, you have the resolution for the CDA in your packet. There was definitely protections that were placed in that resolution to essentially limit the CDA's power. You certainly have the ability to do that with the CDA going ahead. You would certainly have the authority to do that with the Historic Preservation Commission. I think, I mean, we do have an existing ordinance right now that talks about the Historic Preservation Commission and what their duties are. And, and that's also the same ordinance that says that the Plan Commission shall act as that body. I think we would need, we would get feedback from you all on that and then we would make changes to our ordinance. And then however, whatever direction you want us to go in making those changes, that's, that's what we would do.
So the reason I'm asking about this and why it pertains to me is that the commission, all of our committees have our residents on them. And the more opportunities we have for our residents to be involved is gonna be better for our board as a whole. And we used to have a situation where we didn't have enough people volunteering for the committees we had. Um, that's changed now. We have, it's, which is really good, that we have a lot of people that are interested in being on the committees. So this is, would be another opportunity for us to do that. And so that's why I'm asking the questions about this in, in general, so.
Did I read, there might be out of village people on it, is that, or did I misread that?
The village people aren't performing, to my knowledge.
I mean, I mean, is there people, I mean, only people from the village would be?
For the CDA, correct. They have to be residents of the village to be on the CDA. And I think that most of our committees require residency.
You might, you might, the library board has provisions for non-residents. And you might have referenced the Create Wannakee Committee in which I recommended that up to two members may be non-residents, but they would have to be school district residents.
Yeah, because that, that might be what you saw, Bill.
Okay. Gary?
I mean, it, this historic district thing, I lived in Madison in historic district. And just, you gotta make sure that you control the power of historic district because, um, you know, it was insane to live there. Just, I mean, they had more control than anyone in Madison. And the people who lived within it, the costs and expense to do anything here home, it was outrageous. So you gotta, you gotta make sure you can control a, a department like that or a committee.
Okay, so to our friends in Madison, we don't believe you're insane. In the event that, in, in the event that you're writing that, Roberta, that Gary said that they were insane. Want to be clear, our friends to the south are our friends. So, okay, so do we have a motion for this? For the CDA.
The motion, there was a.
Yeah, there's a motion.
Yeah, there is a recommended motion to direct staff to prepare appropriate action items for eliminating the WDC and initiating an active functioning CDA.
Do we have that motion?
I make that motion.
I think Bill put his hand up first, Andy said yes.
I would second.
So I'm gonna go, Bill made the motion and I'll say second. For Phil Williams, any other comments? Okay, call the question, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Bill ran him to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second by Erin Moran.
I'll have to give him that motion.
Aye, aye?
Aye. That's your de facto motion.
Wow, you're slowing the drum on that one.